Can't make it in if you're.
I'm calling the meeting to order. Staff for the flights, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Ask the clerk to take role, please.
Trustee Pierce.
President.
Trustee Masonic.
Here.
Trustee Yost.
Here.
Trustee Dominiac.
Here.
Trustee Colas is absent. Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Hanson.
Here. Nobody's going to be remotely calling in tonight, so we're just missing Ted. Before we start, the only thing I have on my citizens that might anything on my report is item number 10 on the agenda is the ordinance, the purchase of family Pittman family property. I want to just make a quick statement. I will be asking the board to approve tonight the buying of the Pittman property. We spent about two years working toward this goal. So we can make this land an attractive part of our downtown. I'm sure many people through social media and different sites have been wondering why it's taken so long. I just want to lay out a few of the facts. There was a long history on that property over the years. Being lumberyard, black mid shop, body shop, car dealerships. There raised a lot of possibilities of environmental issues that could have been a very costly endeavor. We worked hard to work out the access up to the site so we can do some testing. We did the phase one and phase two testing of the contaminants in that property. We felt that it would be manageable to go further into the project. It took a long time to negotiate with the Pittman family. The lawyers, the family back and forth. But in the meantime, we had to stabilize that culvert by digging the dirt around to prevent the catastrophic collapse and damming the creek. While most of the board here would have loved to move quickly and fast to make this negotiation go faster, when you're dealing with a private enterprise, you have to work diligently, especially if the seller knows that the municipality is the one looking at the purchase. I brought this, we brought this matter in front of the board numerous times and the negotiation got underway. Unfortunately, it stalled a few times and finally tonight, we did get an agreement through the hard work of our administrator, who was able to meet with the, with Mark Pittman, who was the negotiator. Fortunately for us, we were able to get to that point. Jim also did some diligence and worked with the county and fortunately didn't get a grant proposal, but obviously we don't have the grant yet, but we do have a grant pending for the completion of that. As always, everybody sitting on this board, myself included, had to drive by that property and that site daily to look at the blight, the ugliness. But I know Aniac will come together with our civic groups and our families here to come up with a project that'll be meaningful and beautiful for this community. I think everybody sitting on this board will also want to make that a focal point in a beautification project that also will be targeted for that. I know our community development department worked with a architectural firm while we were doing the grant process and we do have some renderings of a concept that later this week possibly the community development department can actually show that out to the public on a concept. So again, we're excited here that it took a long time to get to this point, but hopefully the board will actually see that we passed this type, but we'll find out in a little bit. That's all I have right now. Any citizens wishing to address the board tonight? Anybody here? Okay, we have a couple of items on the consent agenda. One, the approval of the October 12th, 2020 public hearing in regular meeting minutes as presented. The second item is the approval of a resolution approving the 2021 Village Board of Trustees meeting schedule. That's resolution 20 dash 49. And the third item is the approval of a resolution approving cancellation and modification of the 2020 summer programs and special events through the month of November, resolution 20 dash 50. If the board feels comfortable with those three items on the consent agenda, I would ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Masonic, seconded by trustee Yost. Any questions? Trustee Pierce.
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Masonic.
No questions at this time.
Trustee Yost.
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominiac.
None, Your Honor.
And trustee Johnson.
No, Your Honor.
Roll call, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Masonic.
Yes.
Yost.
Yes.
Dominiac.
Yes.
Johnson.
Aye.
Five are voting yes, one is absent. The motion is carried. First item on the regular business tonight, consideration of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff. I'll need a motion in a second.
Ted's not here, so I guess I'll move to approve. I have the numbers here in front of me. Sorry, Your Honor.
That's okay.
Move to approve payment of accounts payable and manual checks in the amount of $466,960.04.
Give a motion from trustee Dominiac. Wait a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Yost. Any questions? Trustee Pierce.
No.
Trustee Masonic.
I just have, I got one question on a line item for HR Green. And this has been coming up since I've been here six years. What's the bidding process for professional services? When was that last bid out?
Are you, are you asking about last time we bid out our engineering services?
Yeah.
It's, it's been quite a while. HR Green has been with us for about 20 years.
20 years. So respectfully, I think it's time that if we're going to look at professional services as, as fiduciary responsibility, it's probably time to probably bid that out. Wouldn't you agree, Mayor?
I think Jim has done a good job with actually looking at certain projects and actually been doing more and more like looking at the specialty of certain engineering firms. But I think, you know, again, Jim, I think we could take a look at that. Obviously, it's not that the attorney could probably answer that better than I can, but as far as the actual, how that works overall.
You know, there is an exemption in the bidding laws that allows professional services to avoid, not to be bid out. That's, it's discretionary or which way you want to do it and how you want to handle that. You know, some people say there's a, there's a need to change things every so often. Joy likes to change auditors about every seven or 10 years. Other people, we've, in Mokegan, we've had the same engineer since 1958. He has a wealth of knowledge which no one on the planet has and he's 97 years old and he's still remarkably good. But that shows you the differential between the, the two extremes. So it's a policy decision for the board.
I'm going to, I'm going to agree with that decision. However, if we're paying $95,000 and the other person could have a wealth of knowledge at $78,000, wouldn't it be a fiduciary responsibility to look at just bids from other companies?
I think what happens here, I think, I've been on the board and I think Scott's been on the board too back before. We had Jim as our, and he was an engineer for the village and now he's the administrator. I can remember way back in the early 90s when I was trustee that we would spend over a million dollars a year in engineering. So I, I'm proud of the fact that Jim's keeping these numbers pretty stable and we use the engineering firms very scarcely because obviously Jim's wearing dual hats here and obviously he does quite a bit of the internal stuff himself. So we're blessed with that. So I think Jim's got a pretty good eye as far as what engineering cost. I think he's negotiated quite a bit and I feel that he's pretty much has a handle on what these things are. So Jimmy, you want to make a comment?
On occasion, we do bid out engineering services. If, if we keep a kind of what I call a bread and butter consultant that has all of our water models, you know, they've approved many of the developments and they have that institutional knowledge, which you'll lose if, and I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but you know, to bring in a new engineer, they start from scratch on understanding the water systems, wastewater systems, you know, they've done many, many studies for us. They understand and have been reviewing and approving and seeing many of the subdivision developments over the last 20 years. So you know, that's one negative you'll have to consider. But if it's not something related to our roadway water sewer systems, on occasion, we do bid out. We use Baxton Woodman, we use Dick's, we, we use kind of a small stable of engineers depending on what we're talking about. It's kind of, you really want to find the right tool for the job. So there have been occasions, you know, I think the last time we bid was the wastewater treatment plant study that we did recently for improvements and the wastewater plant was bid out and went to Trotter. So we don't use them exclusively. I do bid out, I do bid them out on occasion. But, but it is nice to have, like I said, a bread and butter engineer who understands your infrastructure and can answer questions quickly. Whereas if we were to change gears completely and let's say use a different bread and butter engineer, you know, they're going to have to learn all of, all of that institutional knowledge, infrastructure knowledge to be able to speak to it. So we kind of use a hybrid. We don't just use one engineering firm. Certainly on projects that we don't do on a regular basis, you know, aside from the road programs and development review. We, we do go out to bid and see what other firms are out there that might, you know, be able to provide services, higher level services or more cost effective services. So we kind of do both.
Thank you, Jim. And I think also a lot of times we get the engineering firms, especially with development, that's all paid through, through escrows and the developer actually pays a lot of this stuff also.
But I understand that comment, but respectfully, there's a term called fresh minds, new ideas. Respectfully, that if they work for other municipalities, other cities, they may come in with fresh new ideas that this firm may not come in. And respectfully, you know, we don't know if we're overcharged if we don't ask.
Well, I can bring this up at a future committee to hold meeting. If the board would like to at least review it, we can do that. I'm not opposing that. So, but we'll discuss that at a later date. Anything else, trustee Masonic?
No.
Trustee Yost.
I have no questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominiac.
None, Your Honor.
And trustee Johnson.
No questions, Your Honor.
Roll call, please.
Pierce.
Just a second.
Oh, trustee Pierce.
Since my name was mentioned, going all the way back to when we went up, started up with HR Green, I just wanted to agree with trustee Masonic that we should always review our professional services and make sure we're getting the right professional services at the right price. I will say in support of HR Green that we were here when we had very poor engineering firm here and nobody could find their records, nobody could find any of the documentation, nobody could get anything fixed right. And HR Green has stepped, stepped in and stabilized that after a couple of tries of new engineers and having just village only engineers. And I, so in their support, they have stabilized, became a, 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 a source of, of having a solid engineering base for the village. But trustee Masonic is right. We should always review our, our professional services things, even though I am trying to trust our staff and Jim Kaim more.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Masonic.
Yes.
Yost.
Yes.
Dominiac.
Yes.
Johnson.
Aye.
Five voting yes, one is absent. This motion is carried. Consideration of emergency ordinance ratifying the mayoral declaration of emergency related to coronavirus, ordinance number 20 dash 11 dash 36. Motion in a second.
So moved.
Most of by trustee Dominiac, seconded by trustee Johnson.
Is that waiving the second reading?
Without, yes, waiving the second reading.
And that's both waving the second reading. And any questions, trustee Pierce?
Yes, as part of this emergency declaration, as the state gets clamped down more and more and our restaurants aren't allowed to open and cases are spiking, should we as a board review the possibility of not having these meetings in public and having them by Zoom until the governor opens up our restaurants and our, our bars and, and things start to stabilize here in the county?
I'm, I'm, I'm open to that also, yes. The board feels more comfortable being on Zoom. I'll, I'll, I listen and I definitely adhere to that.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just had people asking me why we were meeting when others couldn't.
Trustee Masonic.
Second, the, I, I, I second what trustee Pierce said that we should be doing these Zoom. And I, I would like to, you know, I've asked, I sent the letter for an investigation because people are getting locked out with their IP addresses where they're not able to attend Zoom meetings. I sent that to Amy. So we got to look into why people aren't able to log into our Zoom meetings. They're supposed to be open to the public. I just got a text message while we're sitting here that someone was locked out with their IP address. Again, that's, that's got to be looked in. We can't have open meetings and people getting locked out. That should be more of an emergency than anything else. We're going to go to Zoom meetings that the public is locked out of our Zoom meetings. That becomes a constitutional issue. I brought that up in the letter, so I, I'm forward to, I'm, I'm looking at going to Zoom meetings, but I'm looking at, we got to look at a different format because I don't know how IP addresses are getting locked out that the citizens can't get in the Zoom meetings. And it's not one, it's not two, it's, I've had dozens of people come to me and ask why I can't get in these meetings.
Okay. Administrator Kaya, can you please see why we're not able to get these things handled with Amy, please?
Yeah, if you, if you would just, you know, if they're, if you're comfortable letting us know who's having troubles, we'd like to work with them. You know, Zoom is the preferred platform for villages far and away. We're not getting any other, I'm not aware of any other complaints other than the ones trustee Masonic has brought up of, you know, we haven't gotten any calls at Village Hall or anyone else has said that they've been unable to attend the meetings, but if, if there's a problem, certainly I don't want to, you know, leave anyone excluded.
I can ask the people if they want to come forward. I don't know if they do or not. I can, you know, I could ask for permission if they want, if they want to be, you know, because one serves on one of the, you know, the boards. So I don't know if you want to make waves, so I'll ask them.
Oh, by all means, I mean, they should make waves if they're unable to attend. Me and Amy had just discussed this briefly when you brought it up and, you know, she'd like to work directly with whoever is not able to get into the meeting and try to ascertain why they're unable to get into the meeting.
Anything else, trustee Masonic?
No.
Trustee Yost.
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominiac.
None, Your Honor. Other than I'd like to just suggest that we start really a concerted heavy push on our Facebook to remind people of the mitigation efforts of the three W's. We're heading probably fairly rapidly to tier two, which will put additional burdens on some of our businesses. So anything we can do from a social media perspective to encourage people to follow those three W's would help. Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Johnson.
No questions, Your Honor.
Roll call, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Masonic.
Yes.
Yost.
Yes.
Dominiac.
Yes.
Johnson.
Aye.
Five voting yes, one is absent. This motion is carried. Consideration of ordinance approving a final plat for the Sitco subdivision at the intersection of Stafford Street and Neighbor Avenue, ordinance number 20 dash 11 dash 37.
Move to approve waiving the second reading.
I have a motion for trustee Dominiac to have a second.
Second.
And seconded by trustee Yost. Any questions, trustee Pierce?
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Masonic.
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Yost.
No questions, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominiac.
None, Your Honor.
And trustee Johnson.
No, Your Honor.
Clerk, take role, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Masonic.
Yes.
Yost.
Yes.
Dominiac.
Yes.
Johnson.
Aye.
Five are voting yes, one is absent. This motion is carried. Consideration of a resolution accepting the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2020 as prepared by Lauterbach and Amen LLP. That's resolution 20 dash 51. We'd like to get a motion in a second on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Yost.
Yes.
And seconded by trustee Johnson. Joy is here, she can go over it with us.
Yeah, first I'd like to apologize for being late, Mayor Hanson. It's working and time got away from me. As you know, each year we, Lauterbach and Amen prepares our audit, included in the packet is the audit, a management letter. And Jennifer Martinson Kruger from Lauterbach and Amen will be making that presentation tonight via Zoom. I'm not quite sure how it works.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi. So as I mentioned, I'm Jen Martinson with Lauterbach and Amen. I'm here to present the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2020, or really the audit report. So I do want to start by thanking Joy and the rest of the finance team for all of their hard work during the audit process. As you all know, 2020 has brought its fair share of challenges for everybody. And to be able to speak to the board this evening and let you all know that it was a smooth audit process as it has been in years past really speaks highly to the hard work that went into preparing the audit by the finance team. So thank you. As the board knows, an audit is required to be completed within six months of the village's fiscal year end. And really the goal of that audit is for us to be able to provide an opinion on the financial statements presented this evening. And we have done that. We have issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean audit opinion. It's the highest opinion that we can issue. And that really just means that the financial statements that are presented this evening are materially correct. So there are three sections in your audit document, the introductory section, the financial section, and the statistical section. I'm just going to briefly go through each of those sections and, and kind of highlight some of the key information in each of those. So I will, as I go throughout, just briefly mention some page numbers, both physical page numbers and PDF page numbers if you want to follow along. I'm not sure who has it in front of them and who has it virtually. So, um, that first section is your introductory section and in that section you'll find the transmittal letter or really an introduction letter to the financial statements. That would be page three or PDF page 11. So this is in management's words and it's actually a non-financial letter for the audit report, just introducing the village. So a good place to start in the beginning of that audit. Additionally, on page seven or PDF page 13 is your certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So the village was awarded that award for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2019. And that really just speaks very highly to the transparency of the audit report. So congratulations. It's a very prestigious award. We have submitted the fiscal year 2020 report as well and do anticipate the village will receive that award again for fiscal year 2020. The next section is your financial section. That's where you'll find the unmodified opinion that I mentioned as well as the M D N A or management's discussion and analysis. So as you know, that report in front of you is pretty, pretty large, over 150 pages. So this section is really a nice narrative summary of all the financial information to follow, broken down in about 12 pages. So that's on PDF page 19 or page 10 in that report. So just a lot, a much easier place to digest that information. Again, all kind of concise and summarized in that section. I'm going to go over a few of those key highlights that are included in your M D N A throughout the financial information to follow. So overall, for the village's governmental funds, there was a surplus or an increase in fund balance of approximately 730,000. Specifically speaking to the general fund, there was a decrease in fund balance of approximately 514,000. But that was after the transfer to the capital projects fund. So there really was an increase in revenues over expenditures within that transfer. So ending fund balance for the general fund was approximately 5.6 million, 5 million of which is unassigned or available for spending. And that really equates to just under six months of annual expenditures. The water and sewer fund or the village's business type fund had a slight decrease in net position of approximately 18,000 with ending net position of approximately 42 million. And just to remind the board, that net position number does include your capital assets and your long-term debt. So really there's approximately 4.1 million of unrestricted funds. From there, the big bulk of that report is going to be your notes to the financial statements. Not going to go over that in too much detail, but just want to mention that you'll find additional reporting information there on the village specifically related to long-term debt summaries, capital asset summaries, information on the village's I M R F, police pension plan, and O P E V plan. Additionally, another page I do want to point out is page 90 or PDF page 104. So that's where your budget versus actual statements will start so that you can see a comparison for the year for each of the funds, starting there of where they were budgeted and where the actual numbers came. That last section I mentioned is your statistical section. So that's going to start on page 123 or PDF page 143. So this really is a nice section of 10-year trend information for a variety of figures from the village, including revenues, expenditures, property taxes, major businesses, other things like that. So a really nice place for the board to see all 10 years of trend information in one place for the village. Additionally, as part of the audit process, we do a review of the internal control environment and would be required to communicate with the board this evening if there were any deficiencies found or red flags found during that process. And there were none. We have also issued a management letter which will outline a handful of recommendations or additional required reporting to the board. So that would be that smaller packet that we had. I'm just going to briefly go through, there was one new current recommendation discussing reconciliations for escrow deposits. Additionally, funds over budget and funds with deficit fund balances are outlined in there as well that are repeat comments with additional information on current year. You'll also see management response for each of these comments as well. So all in all, a clean audit, clean audit process, very smooth. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Trustee Pierce, you got any questions?
Yeah, yeah, Your Honor. I just have a couple. I, I read the report with interest and I did notice the escrow transfer, I mean, the escrow auditing and our, our response was we audit upon, upon need. Is there a reason why we should be doing it on a regular basis instead of upon need?
Yes, it's a new G A S B requirement to monitor the escrows on a monthly basis.
And we're going to start doing that?
Yes, we've started already.
Yes, thank you, because that'd be nice to know how much money we're holding from other people. My other, my other question is approximately how much free cash, because I was reading in here, they said like $10 million cash in deposits and general accounts and stuff like that. But a lot of that's encumbered with like pension and stuff, is it not? So how much do we actually have free for rainy day emergencies and stuff like that?
As of a few days ago, it was just around 5 million. About 2 million of it is invested. I was planning on investing a bit more, but as the rates drop, it really didn't make sense. I have been doing some very short-term, three-month and six-month investments, CD investments.
All right. So we do, thanks to the planning of this board, have money on hand for emergencies and for purchases that we need to make for the good of the village.
Absolutely. We are in very good position.
Okay, thank you. My other question is about, it was Jennifer talking to us?
Yeah.
She mentioned that we had like $15 million in expenses and. She mentioned that we had like $15 million in expenses and 13 million in, in revenue, but a fund transfer made up for the deficit spending?
Included in the 15 million of expenses is the increase in the police spend, the other post-employment benefits and police pension across. Jennifer can explain that better, but that's what it's related to, they're not actual expenses.
Okay, and where did we transfer the money out of? I missed that.
I believe the transfer was to the capital projects fund.
Okay.
Yeah, if you look at, do you have a PDF in front of you or the physical copy?
No, we have an iPad that we have to scroll through real fast to catch up with what you're saying.
Yeah, so on PDF page 41 is where you'll see kind of what you're asking and what Joy had mentioned, both questions really. So it'll say 29 at the bottom of the page for anybody who has that hard copy, but you're going to see your total revenues for the year, as you mentioned, were 13 million in the general fund specifically. And then expenditures in the general fund specifically were 11 million, so you have that excess of 1.3 million. But then you'll see below that there was a transfer out of the general fund to various funds, but the majority of that did go, it looks like, to capital projects.
Okay.
Which still left, as she mentioned, approximately 5 million in the general fund that is available for spending.
All right. And then just one more, one more question or concern. Our expenses went up by 14.2% last year? And a lot of that was in the police department, are we expecting that same increase, or? That was a yes?
Yes, the, actually, the, what's coming up next will be the tax levy, the levy for the police pension, it is 2.1 million. Up above, I think it's over about 200,000. 2.1 million for the police pension tax.
Okay, that's my question for now, thank you.
Trustee Maisick?
In this report, do we do any analysis on culverts, covert replacement, covert emergencies? Cap, catastrophic? We got a $9.8 million on the sewer, and that's for the water, the water department? On page? Let me get to the page, page 60. Page 138 of the report.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get there.
Trustee Maisick, could you repeat where page you're on?
Page 138.
Is that in the packet?
Yes.
Thank you.
So do we do any studies, if do we do any, if, if we had a covert fail, water mains come the end of a useful life, is this in the report? How old are them water mains on Main Street? Is this any of the planning in this report? Does this take an effect? Of any, if we had a catastrophic on Main Street?
That's not the purpose of this report.
I understand that.
Right, so it wouldn't be in there, but it is something that Jim and staff, we do discuss during our budgeting process. And if you look at our capital plan, which, which is, we don't have to know that, it comes with the budget, you will see that, that projects relating to the kind of village we're talking about are in that plan, however, there are no funds. But, you know, Jim makes and staff makes the decision on which projects we attack, because we have to do it a little at a time. But in the budget process, we'll bring it up again, as we do each time, that we need to increase the amount of funding for that kind of infrastructure repair.
Okay, so do we have a history of water main breaks? Do we keep that in capital planning?
No, that would come from how it works.
So we, yes, we do keep a history of water main breaks, and it's usually in the neighborhood of 12 to 15 a year.
Okay. So the, so this 9.8, that, that's for the sewer plant, right? On page 138?
That's the loan.
That's the loan for the sewer plant, right?
That's the, the 9.8 is the beginning outstanding balance, we, we paid 785,000. Right, so it's a 9 million balance on the loan.
Okay.
Anything else, trustee Maisick?
No.
Trustee Yost?
I have no additional questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominak?
I have no questions at this point, your honor.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
Okay, anything else, Joy?
No, thank you Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so we do have a motion and a second. This time, if you'd like, I'll take a motion, a roll call, please.
Pierce? Pierce?
Aye.
Maisick?
Yes.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five voting yes, one is absent, this motion is carried. Consideration of a resolution accepting the municipal compliance report for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2020, that's resolution 20-52. Joy?
Yeah, the police pension fund is required to file this report with the village before the levy is actually done. Jennifer is going to go through the report for you, it is prepared by Lauterbach and Amen on behalf of the pension fund.
Okay, so I'm just going to go through this report page by page. As Joy mentioned, that this is required to be completed before the levy in December. It's very small, so I'll go through page by page, but I do want to say that this really is just a summary of information that can be found in other places. So you will see that on, it is, starting on page four of that report, you will see where each of those numbers is coming from, so it's pretty self-explanatory, but I'll just go through each of those categories, so. Starting on page one, so that first section, for section one, you're going to see your total cash investments, the change from the prior year, as well as total net position. Number two is going to show estimated receipts for the upcoming year. So that's based on assumptions that are rolled forward, as you'll see in the index that I mentioned, starting on page four. Page three, as Joy mentioned, is where you'll see the recommended contributions, both from the IDOI, the Illinois Department of Insurance, as well as the private actuary. So you'll see that that increase in the contribution for the next fiscal year. The next page, starting with four, is additional information on the returns received from investment assets. You'll see kind of those estimated or assumed returns, as well as the actual return, which understandably was decreased in 2020. Number five, again, very self-explanatory, your number of active employees. Number six, information on benefits that were dispersed. Now that next page is your funded ratio of the fund, both from the Illinois Department of Insurance, as well as your private actuary. And then the unfunded liability is noted at eight. And additionally, the investment policy for the pension board is attached as required. So as I mentioned, then, starting on page four, this is really, for each one of those categories, going to help the board to understand where those come from. So again, they come from three different areas, they'll come from the audit report, your Illinois Department of Insurance filing, or the actuary report. So really, just a summary of all that information in one place. Any questions on that piece?
Any questions? Trustee Pierce, anything?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Maisick?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Yost?
No questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominak?
My only question is, do we have limitations as to how this fund can be invested?
Yes, by state statute.
Thank you. That's all I have, your honor.
Thank you, trustee Johnson?
No questions, your honor.
I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by trustee Dominak, seconded by trustee Johnson. There's no further questions, clerk can take roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Maisick?
Yes.
Yost? Dominak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five voting yes, one is absent, this motion is carried. Consideration of a resolution accepting, accepting the Gatsby 67 and 68 actuarial valuation for fiscal year ended April 30th, 2020, and the tax levy actuarial evaluations for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2021, for the police pension fund, resolution 20-53. Need a motion and a second to get it on the floor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by trustee Johnson, seconded by trustee Yost. Any questions? Trustee Pierce? Joy, you got a?
The value, the actuarial valuation is, is the driver for the tax levy numbers we both discussed in the municipal compliance report. The recommendation for levy is 2,151,257. And Jennifer, is there anything else you'd need to add to that? Oh, she's gone, okay.
Apparently not.
This is the nuts and bolts of the levy, as you see, it's a very thick report. And trustee Dominak, you asked about the investment, it, it, towards the back of this page 21-ish of not your PDF, but of the document, I don't have the PDF. That will explain the investment restrictions by the state.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Missed that, there's a couple pages here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, trustee Pierce, maybe?
No, the only thing I'm going to say at this point is, going forward in the future, no matter who's sitting here, I would appreciate it if the board members all get a hard copy of this, they shouldn't be relying upon having to print this out and then being sitting here in a meeting going page 20, page 30 of 178, 282 pages, but let's go look at page 31 on page 99 of your PDF, I mean.
Yes, it gets confusing.
It's, it's, it's confusing for us, it's probably confusing for the people in the audience, so I think when we're up here discussing money, this value, we should have hard copies, and we can afford black ink, maybe not colored, as Jay would say, but.
If you would still like a hard copy, I can provide that for you.
I would appreciate it.
I like one.
Sure.
Trustee Maisick?
Comment at this point.
Trustee Maisick? Are we still underfunded?
For the police pension?
Yes. By, by, you know what the percentage?
I think the percentage is 32, 33%.
33% underfunded?
Yes.
No, we're funded at 33%.
33%, but we're still, we're still playing catch-up, right?
Yes.
Do you know what the catch-up funding is?
No.
So we don't?
We have to catch up by 2042. And but that will change each year.
I understand, because we're hiring new people.
Correct.
So we don't know, we don't know what their responsibility of the catch-up is.
I don't off the top of my head, I know it's in this.
I think that'd be good for the trustees to know that for future planning.
Okay.
What our catch-up point is, because we might get to a point where we got a big number in front of us. That we got to do some future planning or budget, budget crunching.
So the actuarial, the actuary, when, when they prepare their support each year, it is the amount that we levy is to get us caught up by 2042.
I, I, I understand how it works. I just would like to know, to get us back up to normal speed where we should be, I understand we're still underfunded, to get us, get us to the, to get us the proper funding.
What's, what's, what's the overall liability of our, our police pension fund?
I'm, I'll have to look for it here in the audit, because I don't remember off the top of my head. But it is in the audit, and it is in that actuarial report. I will get it for you right now.
Trustee Maisick, would you agree with me that we should maybe table this one item until we can get some answers on this?
I, I would agree with that.
I'll make, I'll make the, the sub-motion that we tabled this item until we get some, some answers.
I have a motion by trustee Pierce.
The liability is 35,100, it's page 87 of the audit. I'm sorry, 40,269,850. On page 87, required supplementary information, if you look to the far.
Page?
Page 87 of the audit.
Your honor, I, I made a motion, and if I get a second, I'd like to work on it.
I'll second Scott's, trustee Pierce's, just to have a hard copy. I think that makes more sense.
Table?
Yeah. This is a big number.
You have a motion and a second. I'll have a clerk take roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Maisick?
Yes.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
Five voting yes, one is absent, this motion is carried, so we'll bring this up at our next meeting. Okay. Make sure everybody gets a hard copy so they have it. Item 10, consideration of an ordinance authorizing the purchase of land from the Pittman family, ordinance number 20-11-38.
Move to approve, waiting the second reading.
Oh, second that motion.
Okay, a motion made by trustee Dominak, seconded by trustee Pierce. Jim, you want to just walk a little history of that, just for the board, real fast, as far as, where we're at?
History of the negotiation or history of the?
Well, we don't have the history, because I've mentioned it earlier, but if you want to just process that you went through for the folks.
Well, I've been, I've been working on Mr. Pittman for seems like years. Even requesting a donation of the property at, at some point in time. And just going over various scenarios, of course, those negotiations and conversations accelerated when the, when the property began to, when the covert began to fail. And you know, we just, you know, we went back and forth, mainly by phone, I haven't seen him in a, in a number of years, but you know, I maintained a amicable conversation with him and kind of kept at it. And as, you know, as we discussed in his executive session, there became a point where it seemed like we wanted to get a little more aggressive with the negotiation, that was, seems like about eight weeks ago. And we got, we got to a number. And then it kind of stalled out a little bit with his attorneys, we were able to provide a contract, and I think about four weeks went by and no response, and kind of just, you know, again, kept, kept calling and emailing and prodding, and we were able to, to get a contract, the one you see before you in the packet. Very recently, I think it was last week. And now it's before you for consideration of purchase.
And in fairness, one of the Pittman, one of the Pittman siblings died in the interim there, and that might have something to do with whether it was the lawyer.
Didn't hear that. Thank you, Jim. We got a motion and a second. Trustee Pierce, any comment?
As, as you alluded to earlier in your opening report, your honor, you've been here longer than I have, and I've been here a pretty long time. And every mayor has tried to work with the Pittmans to come to a reasonable conclusion on the property there. The Pittmans are shrewd, shrewd people, and they have a long crowd history here in Antioch, and they had, they had a care and concern about the property, and despite everybody's efforts to negotiate, the, their, their value in the property was more than the village could afford at that time. As time goes by, the, the value of the property has changed, and the financial situation in the village has changed, and as the administrator alluded to, not only him, but every administrator we've had, have worked on, on trying to come up with deals there, from offering to them to donate the land so they can have tax credit to us buying the land, and up until this point, it's fallen apart, and, and maybe with the, the season and the environment, it's finally time that we start doing something to fit in the property. I, I think we all agree, and everybody in town agrees, it's an eyesore. It needs to be fixed, if either we had a choice of, of putting the covert back in, fixing it, giving it back to the, the Pittmans, and letting them continue on their way, or buying the property for about the same price as what just putting the covert back in would be, I, I think the village board, the administrator, the mayor, and the, the board members here have done a good job of coming to a good deal for the village. It's time. The Pittman property needs to be cleaned up, if we could start cleaning up now, we may not be able to afford all the stuff we'd like to have, I would like to have. that as a park and a central point that we can do things in the winter time and in the summertime. You know, kind of a fire and ice type demonstration area, so the kids can do things and families can do things. So I'm, I'm willing to support this because I think that is the heart of our community and we need to buff it up, shine it up and make it a true heart. So I, I'll support this gladly and, and with, with high hopes for what we can do with that piece of property and going forward.
Thank you, trustee Pierce for the comment. Trustee Mason.
Well, I'm going to be the nice here today. One, I still, from nineteen seventy-four, I still, I still not understanding that how the village got ownership of that culvert from the Pittman property where we covered over, then we maintained ownership of it. Two, I've got a problem with the, the cost of the cleanup that it's not a GMP contract, a guaranteed maximum price contract that this is an as-is purchase price, as-is, meaning for everybody that's watching, everybody in the audience, this is an as-is that we're buying a piece of property, this could be three hundred thousand, it could be five hundred thousand dollars, it could be a million dollars, it could be a mile down cleanup, it could be anything that's found, this could be anything it could be, there's not three bids in our package. There typically when you buy something, there's three bids of a cost cleanup, there's no cost cleanup in my package. As-is, when you buy a house, as-is, a nineteen hundred house, as-is, you could find expensive lead, the contract could be anything it is, a car, you buy a car, as-is. Your, your, the cost to repair the car could be more than a car's worth. As-is, I, I, I just, you know, typically we have multiple bids, we have no multiple bids on an as-is contract. We're asking, we're asking the village, the constituents to give a blank check. Taxpayer money, blank check for a cleanup. Blank check. I'm not going to vote yes to a blank check, Pittman property, yeah, it needs to be fixed. Not at the taxpayer's expense, I was put up here and I'm not going to give a blank check for a cleanup, it just doesn't make common sense to give someone, here's my checkbook, do what you want, make it right. Define whatever's in that ground, I, I just will not give a blank check. It's an eyesore, I agree with it, I think that, I think we should make Mr. Pittman clean enough, then we go to, to purchase the property, I think we should have gone the route, get an environmental attorney to look at it, get a second opinion. I, I, I just don't believe a blank check is the way to purchase this property, it just doesn't make sense. Five hundred thousand dollars, that'd be great, if that was the only deal on this, that, that we're going to spend half a million dollars and buy this piece of property that if it wasn't an as-is contract. It should be a guaranteed maximum price contract, if we could say we're going to buy this piece of property and anything over the cleanup price comes out of Mr. Pittman's pocket, then I'd be for it, but that's not the way this contract's written. I could not support this contract to, to potentially say that this could cost the taxpayers a million dollars on a backend price. That's an as-is contract, so I would be on no vote to this, this as-is. And I'm sorry if anybody that's got to look at it, but I can't, I gotta be fiduciary responsible with everybody's checks. So that's my statement to this.
Thank you, trustee Mason, trustee Yost.
I have no questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominique.
I guess I have a question for clarification, because I thought that there had been some information shared with us previously about the potential cost of cleanup, but I also believe that it really depends on what the property is going to be used for, which would drive what kind of cleanup, if any, would have to be done. So I'm in support of this. I think that the, the, the more challenging part of this, once we make this decision, is going to be what do we do with the property? And I, I believe that there's an opportunity for us to have open space there, but I also hope that we would consider looking at some kind of revenue generation, we've got two key parcels at the north end of our historic downtown, this, uh, the village hall and that piece of property that we will have control of, and I would hate for that property to not have anything revenue generating built on it so that we could recover some of the costs of, to trustee Mason's point, the cleanup as well as the acquisition price. But we certainly think it's time for us to move forward on, on this piece of property, and so I would support.
Thank you, trustee Johnson.
I have no questions, your honor.
I just would like to make a, a comment, and I, I, I agree that there is a lot of unknowns on that property. Having a negotiation though, Jim, I've had some discussions with Jim as far as the Pittmans. And all the Pittman's responsibility would be is to fix the pipe, bury it, and we still have the issue of that property, it's still ugly.
Actually, it would be our responsibility to bury the pipe, to put it back.
So I believe that this board spent several meetings discussing that property, you know, it was on the market for, for a long time, for over a million dollars, we had it appraised. It basically appraised out at what we basically are paying for, right around that number. I believe that the phase one, phase two environmental studies that we did on it kind of got, gave us an indication about what some of the costs were, we all knew about what those figures were, Jim, you can, you can share that with us as far as some of the initial, uh, cost figures that you got.
So I, I did speak with our consultant, H R Green, to give me an estimate. Trustee Mason's right, in one respect, there is a risk. There is no way for anyone to come into a phase three cleanup scenario with an estimate. How it works is if somebody's excavating contaminated soil, soil, you keep excavating until it's gone. They'll do, they could do some work to try to determine, you know, how much excavation it is, and the phase two did some of that. The estimation I got was, you know, maybe two to three hundred thousand dollars to, to do the cleanup, you know, it could be more than that, it could be less than that. Um, it's impossible until you hire a contractor and they start digging, and, and that's where the risk comes in, where you really don't know how many shovels full of dirt you have to treat as hazardous. So there is, there is some risk on it, I understand the concern. But we, we have done enough research to, you know, know, you know, where these potential environmental issues are. We've got some, you know, some preliminary cost estimates, again, two to three hundred. And as, you know, as, as far as, you know, changing this contract to a net type contract, I don't, I don't think we'd have a deal on the table, just from my experience in dealing with the Pittmans, but I did propose that, my initial negotiations were to, you know, have a, a net number or do not exceed, you, you know, so purchase price minus cleanup essentially. Uh, but that, that was going, you know, nowhere. Um, so if, if, if the board wishes to obtain the property, I think I've, I've gotten as good of a deal as I can get, but I, I will say for the record, it, this is not a no-risk proposition, you know, there, there is some risk for some environmental cleanup, but we think we, we have at least an idea of what, where we're going to be in, in the ballpark. We also have funding through that grant that will cover part of those cleanup costs, so part of the grant we applied, uh, to stormwater management for had a line item for cleanup costs, and I don't have that in front of me today. Might not be all of the money, but there, there was some cleanup cost that would be eligible. I guess the only other thing I can say about it is if the village board opts to do an open concept whereby you would open the creek up or, or create a river walk or create a lagoon, you'd have to excavate anyway, and most of the cost with cleanup is excavating and hauling. And if, if in the final analysis, you know, that's what the village decides to do, you would incur those costs, whether it's cleanup or not, now after you get the, the loads on the truck, you know, there will be costs, and if it's, if it's a contaminated load, it's going to be treated as hazardous and go a different place than, than a clean load. And that literally, you know, if, if we did an excavation, such as the one contemplated in the concept, a lot of that cleanup cost is going to be incurred anyway, just to the sheer fact that we'd be removing material. So I think those are all factors that, you know, you kind of need to consider here.
Thank you, Jim, trustee Pierce.
So to the, to the cleanup cost, we would have to pay to excavate that anyways, is what you just said. If we were to make an open lagoon and a river walk and a nice little bridge across it that people are asking about. Um, so there would be some costs in there, we've already excavated a bunch of dirt, piled it up on the property. It's sitting there with no silt fencing or anything around it, has that dirt been tested? That we pulled out, did we do testing on that?
No, but there was no indication um, that that has contaminated most of the backfill above the pipe, which is what we removed, was sand and gravel. And there was no indication as we were excavating that it was contaminated, so we did not have it tested, you know, you would start testing if you had an indication, you know, if you smelled petroleum or solvents or saw discolorations, or we didn't see any of that, so we, we did not have those stockpiles tested.
So, so while we're waiting for grants to be approved and all that, we could start doing cleaning on the property to a basic amount, so we don't have it covered with weeds and it's not such an eyesore, I mean, I know we can't until we generate the right amount of money make this brand plan, whether it's a revenue generating thing, which I disagree with, or an open space area for families that I would, that I would promote, but either way, we can't do anything until we get grants approved that we've submitted for, from SMC and from the state. We can start doing stuff with money we've got in the bank to do stuff like clean it up, make it at least not such an eyesore.
Um, I, I guess we, after we control the property, yeah, we, we get to decide what happens on it, so yeah, we could, we could do things on the property, we could begin environmental cleanup. We, you know, we know there's some, you know, old gasoline tanks there, you know, those I think should probably be removed, so that, that work could commence. So i- in, are you asking, like, should we remove the stockpiles that are there?
I'm asking if we can start doing stuff to make it not such a nice, or why we're waiting to make it, whatever brandy we plan to have, because we've been sitting here for twenty years thinking of doing something about it, but never doing anything.
Yeah, it would be up to the board, I, I guess, if you want to beautify the property in an interim condition prior to, you know, having a, a, a true plan for the property and understanding, you know, what that means, yeah, I guess the board could do that.
Okay.
Going on Mr. Pittman's property?
You'd have to own it.
You'd have to own it first.
You're right.
Correct.
When they're done.
That's all I have, your honor.
Okay, trustee Dominique.
Uh, for the purpose of the people that are not in the room or have not read the contract, we don't close on this until December fifteenth, is that correct?
That is correct.
So until that time, um, I think it's a great idea, maybe we could do this at the next town meeting and have some more discussion about how to move forward on the property once we acquire it, but I want to make sure people understand that if we approve this contract tonight, it's still another, almost, over a month before we can actually do something on it. Um, and the other thing I wanted to point out, your honor, you mentioned that the appraised value, I believe, um, that the appraised value was five thirty-five. So we're actually coming in below the appraisal, which I think is, kudos to you, Jim, for getting us underneath the appraisal. That's all, your honor.
Thank you, anything else, trustee Mason?
No, we don't have the grant approved, I just, I just feel it's too much risk for me to vote this, at this point in time.
Okay, I think that the, uh, there is a motion and a second on the table. Okay, for that, and, uh, have a clerk take role, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Mason.
No.
Yost.
Yes.
Dominique. Yes.
Johnson.
Aye.
We've got four voting yes, one voting no. Motion to go forward with the, um, the contract with the Pittmans, it's, uh, passed. And one was absent. Okay, approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to enter into an agreement with the CDS Office Technologies for the Purchase, Service, Support and Maintenance of Integrated Squad Cameras and Body-Worn Camera Systems, including the Purchase of Maintenance Technologies Report Agreement and Ancillary Hardware and Systems Required for Implementation, that's Resolution twenty-nine fifty-four, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Motion's made by.
Scott.
Uh, trustee Pierce, second by trustee Yost. Any questions, trustee Pierce?
No, I think this is a good thing, it's a long time coming, we do have to be aware on this, just as the Pittman property, there will be increasing costs over the years. Maybe even more substantially than what the Pittman property would have, but this is a very good thing for the village, our police officers and our public to, uh, ensure the safety of, of, of all sites involved. So I'm, I'm glad this is happening and I appreciate the hard work on our police department's part in investigating this and all those who promoted this over the years.
Thank you, trustee Mason.
It's a long time, I promoted this for the last four years, so I'm happy this finally came to fruition. You know, I, I donated my personal money into this, so I'm glad this is, finally came to the table for a vote.
Thank you, trustee Yost.
Uh, no questions, your honor.
Trustee Dominique.
I have none, the chief did a great job at the committee, the whole meeting, walking us through this, so, and for those of you that are listening, this was a budgeted item and you pretty much came in on the budget, so thank you for that, chief.
Trustee Johnson.
Fully supportive of it, um, no questions, your honor.
I just make one comment, uh, you had mentioned four years, trustee Mason. This camera system analysis goes further back than that, I think it depends on the, the era, I think, uh, there was a lot of mixed, uh, communications with police departments. I think the chief could, can attest to that, because I know he's had bosses that we've talked to, I've been mayor for a while here, so I, I, we've had discussions on that. And chief, I would just like to make a quick comment on, on the, some of the pros and cons that you remember on some of these things, why we're finally at this point, just so we have a better understanding.
Sure, so as presented with the committee, the whole, we, we started using cameras twenty years ago. There's been a lot of legislative changes going on with the cameras and they're going to continue to have evolutions as we move forward. The legislation has reached a point now, I think, where more law enforcement is becoming more comfortable with the concept of body cams. And I think the biggest part of it is now, um, given recent events we've seen over the last couple of years, the public demands them. Law enforcement's vision of them has changed, you know, if you'd asked me ten years ago what cops thought of body cams, you'd had some pushback, it would have been a concern over, you know, quote-unquote, big brother watching, but over the last five years, that those optics have changed internally, and now we have unanimous support internally. That's always a big, big barrier to overcome in a, in a, in a union environment, you have to have buy-in from all levels. And I think the timing is right where we finally have that buy-in from, you know, the patrol officers on the street up, up to the elected board.
Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, we do a motion and a second, if there's no further questions, I'll entertain a, a roll call.
Pierce.
Aye.
Mason.
Yes.
Yost.
Yes.
Dominique.
Yes. Johnson.
Aye.
Five voting yes, one is absent, this motion is carried. The administrative report, Jim.
Uh, as you see, um, Lake Street's nearing completion. Um, there, there is a holdup on the portion in front of Olive, very north, they decided, the contractor decided to pave prior to the installation of the curb and drainage system and, and expanded sidewalk there. So you will see some work, it still has to get done, and, and the holdup is we're, we're waiting for some drainage structures and grates that will be used to form around, so until they have those on site, which they do not at this point, I'm told maybe this week, I was also told maybe last week, um, they would have, you know, that, that material there so they could begin the forming, but our price won't change. They, they just made a, a, a decision with good weather and availability asphalt to just get paving portion of it done with, and then the only remnant work that I'm aware of today is, you know, some cleanup, get rid of some signage, there's some more striping that has to happen on the installation of that sidewalk piece. So, um, I'll let you know as soon as I know.
Okay.
Bike path is also, um, getting closer. The excavations are done, the drainage is installed, and I'm, I'm told we're going to see pavement. Um, the new layer of pavement laid on the bike path this week, so I'm, I'm hoping we're near the, the completion of the bike path project as well. And then we, um, we've seen good progress on the village hall. The, the contractors have been, I've been very impressed with our contractors, they've been working very hard, showing up very early, working late. Um, really working at a good pace. And, you know, we're, we're hopeful we'll see that conclude in probably the next, I'm going to say month or six weeks. They seem like they're on pace to, to maybe get it done in that timeframe, which would be great. So we're seeing good, you know, good activity and progress on our, our projects this year.
Thank you, Jim. Claire?
I also need an executive session, or I guess I'll leave that to the board if they would like to go into executive session to talk about the FOP contract modifications.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Claire?
I have no report, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Trustee reports. Trustee Pierce?
I don't have anything other than to thank our police officers for the hard work they've been doing lately. Not only are they out there working for us, they're, they're suffering the, the COVID situation, just like the general population is. And they're working hard to get around that. And they're, they're also responding to all sorts of interesting calls. And every single one of those interesting calls seems to make it to Facebook as fast as it can make it with the, the public saying, what's going on? What's happening? We need answers right now. So I appreciate their hard work in the face of all they're, they're doing at this point. And the chief says he's got a new badge he's showing off to everybody. So your, your little village emblem, do you want to show that?
Walk around like a man, like walk around.
It's a, it's a silver and blue one on the bottom.
Right.
Correct.
Like a tiny club on the runway.
Jeff, that camera is up there if you want to hold it up.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Anything else, trustee Pierce?
No, Your Honor, not this time.
Trustee Mason?
Did everybody get the emails on the public works?
Yes.
Okay. The only, the only thing I want to, I want to say is I didn't bring it up when, on the minutes, because I wanted to wait to the trustee report is I, since, since one was launched across the bow and, and the cameras, I have brought up in round 173 about writing some letters for the speed reduction in our business district. Trustee Pierce also mentioned it last time that we should maybe write some, do some letter writing to IDOT. And every time that was put in the minutes and every time we, 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 we talk about stuff, I don't know if anything ever gets done. So it's been put in the minutes and I just wouldn't like to ask that we do write a letter and we don't take the thing, we don't take the avenue saying it's a state route, we don't have control of it, because I would hate to sit there and have someone get hurt and come back to our meeting and say, why did my son or daughter get killed on that road? And you guys didn't do nothing when we all recognized that road is maybe too fast. That we maybe should write a letter to IDOT and maybe either us do a traffic study or ask IDOT to do a new traffic study. It's been in the minutes. We should, it's an action item. Maybe we should start, instead of filing this stuff, maybe start doing, doing stuff on the stuff. Just a suggestion, because every time we do stuff, we just put them in the file drawers.
Are you sure they're putting them in the file drawer, trustee Mason?
Did you write a letter?
Did I personally write a letter?
I don't know. Was a letter written on IDOT about this?
About the same, but you, you're making comments that
Well, I, I don't have
Doesn't do anything, but obviously
Mayor, mayor, all respect. Trustee Pierce brought it up. I brought it up in the past. I haven't got a copy of any letter written to IDOT. So respectfully, before you launch at me, respectfully, I haven't got a letter. He hasn't got a letter, so respectfully, I brought it up multiple times. Respectfully, I haven't got a copy of the letter. So respectfully, I can't verify a letter was written. Respectfully, I haven't got the copy of the letter. Respectfully, I don't know. So if I haven't got a copy of the letter, respectfully, I can't verify it was written.
Okay, well, so we'll make sure when Jim writes the letter on behalf of the village board that you'll respectfully get a copy of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Yost?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Trustee Dominik?
Well, I'm glad you don't, trustee Yost, because I have a number of things. First of all, administrator Kime has mentioned that there's still some striping work to be done. Is it possible, Jane Marsky from Hannah's has been asking for a crosswalk on the side that, on the limerick side from the parking lot to go over to Hannah's. I know there's one on the east side of Top. She's been asking for one on the, on the west side there. So I don't know if that's something that they could add to the project. She's asked for that several times. And I don't know if that information has gotten to you, so I'm just telling you about it now. If it's feasible, it would be helpful to, to put that in.
I'll, I'll look into it.
Thank you. That's the first thing. Secondly, I just, you know, Joy, I always love this meeting because there's so much to read and it just demonstrates the great work that your team has done and does all year long. So thank you for that. I also wanted to say that I wanted to concur with trustee Pierce that we should move our meetings to Zoom. We have planning zoning coming up. Couple other things. I see Abby is here from the Shell Station and it looks great. And I love your idea of asking the community to come up with some artwork and some ideas for your sign. It was really creative and thank you for that. The other thing is that our committee of the whole meeting, we had some discussion about surveys. And a couple of comments were made that the same people fill out surveys and some people don't get surveys. So I took the liberty from the COVID-19 business survey that we did earlier in the summer to print off. And Bob, if you can send these down. The people who received the survey, and then you can see there's a column that tells you if it was completed, if it was partially completed, or if it was not open. So hopefully that'll answer some questions for people who are wondering who received that survey. And we did have a previous discussion about this and recognized that because we use the chamber email list that we needed to buoy that up with more emails for people that aren't in the chamber. So I know that staff is looking at how to do that. I think that's it. Yeah, I think basically, again, it's just, you know, we have concerns about COVID and the more we can do to promote safety is important. And then lastly, in addition to having some discussion at the next cow or a subsequent cow regarding Pittman, I'd also like us to have a discussion about what we can do to help our businesses in town. You know, obviously the restaurants have been significantly impacted by tier one. It'll get worse with tier two and hope to God we don't go to tier three because that'll close down our small retail businesses. So, Your Honor, if we could perhaps have a discussion at the next cow and brainstorm some ideas, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
We are working on something, Michael. We had discussions this afternoon. I know you're working on something that you just got just today, correct? That has something in it from, I want you to just, just give a quick, I mean, you don't have a whole lot of information on it, but just give them a quick as far as, because I know trustee Pierce had brought it up at the last county, or county meeting about that.
I, I think that staff was hoping to, maybe at the next county meeting, to have an opportunity to present some different ideas. We do have a economic development task force this week. We'd like to get some input from the business community, the members of the business community there, especially we have several small business owners. So we see that as an opportunity to discuss some of the concepts about providing some assistance to the small business community. Now, this week you'll see a, a launch of a, an interactive map. We have plans this week to have a fairly aggressive press release and to try to promote the fact that the village is making some initiatives to try to promote and try to help our small businesses in, in view of the fact that the COVID phase we're currently in, unfortunately. And based on that fact, there'll be an interactive map which will identify and highlight small businesses, specifically retail and restaurants. That will hopefully be activated this week. It'll be a QR code also, which provides direct links to different business sites, specifically their websites. So if somebody's looking for a menu or wants to know where Italian is or Mexican food opportunities, that this QR code on this interactive map will highlight that. So that will be, we'll be activating this week. That's the first phase. We're also working on some improvements for our dedicated parking. Obviously, dine out opportunities will be more important for the next three, four months. Therefore, we'll probably be bringing back our dedicated parking areas for pickup, for dining opportunities. We're working on some signage for dedicated parking spaces. But to answer the question correctly, it's my hope that we'll have a proposal or a concept for some, maybe grant assistance. It's, we're in the very preliminary stages of working on that right now and we'll be looking for your input at the next cow. So that's, gives you a quick, some highlights of what's coming attractions.
Thank you, Michael.
If I could, Michael, thank you. And particularly on the parking for curbside pickup. I know the restaurants have shared with me that they have had people say, that's your sign. Leave me alone, I'm going to park here kind of thing. So I don't know if there's any kind of enforcement that, or what we can tell the restaurants that people deliberately ignore the curbside pickup signs and park there.
Again, I think the signs that we're working on will be big enough to make it quite clear that these are pickup zones. So if we don't get the cooperation of the, of, of the community, we'll have to continue to refine that concept. But these signs will have basically a logo and bill of anti-act that these parking spaces are specifically dedicated for pickup zones. There's probably a handful of restaurants that actually need them on Main Street and Lake Street. But we're, working with a contractor right now to fabricate those signs. I hope to have those sometime ready for next week.
Thank you.
The attorney just mentioned to me under the emergency declaration that was passed, we can do some temporary things that I can sign into, into law that would cover that. So the laws would, instead of doing an ordinance that says, hey, these are designated through these times that, you know, I can actually use my powers of emergency declaration to make those temporary spots a legal spot where people can't park and they could get ticketed if they do try to park there.
That's great, Your Honor. We need to communicate that to the restaurants so they
We will.
Know to contact the police department. Thank you.
Not my job. Okay, anything else, trustee Johnson?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, Jim asked earlier if, if, I know he sent out an email about the the FOP contract and Bob, Bob, I'm sorry, Bob. And did you get any responses or do you guys all want to go into executive session, everybody?
I'd like to go into executive session for the FOP contract and potential sending litigation.
All right, there won't be any action taken after the, and no other action will be, will be taken. That's all we're going to be discussing is the FOP contract and, and litigation, but no action at all.
Was that probable litigation, trustee Pierce?
Potential, yeah, probably, potential.
With no action, so. All right, I'll need a motion in a second.
Come on.
Second. Trustee Dominik made the motion, second by trustee Yost. Roll call, please.
Pierce?
I.
Mason?
Yes.
Yost?
Yes.
Dominik?
Yeah.
Johnson?
I.
Five voting yes, one absent. Most are carried to go into the executive session. Okay, we'll take a quick break.